Call this meeting to order, all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Tatzias, Mr. Giggie.
Here.
Mr. O'Hare.
Yeah.
Mr. Espinola.
Yep.
Mr. Booton.
Here.
Mr. Lemay.
Here.
Mr. Morin.
Yeah.
Mr. Bahu.
Here. Okay, Mr. Lemay, is there anybody registered to speak today?
There is no one this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. Any school committee communications? Nope, none at all. How about a student, a report from Victoria, our student representative?
I apologize, I do.
I'm sorry, we have some communications, Mr. Booton.
School committee communication, I was called by Ray Adams of the WYNC today, they're having legislative breakfast on May 4th, and I believe it was sent out to everybody. They did this a couple of years ago, it was very nice, telling us what they did, where we do do a lot of work with them, I would hope everybody could make it, and everybody's invited.
Okay.
Where is it?
Thank you.
At the Y again.
The one in Lowell?
Yes. May 4th.
Actually, I believe it was May 6th.
May 6th?
But that's okay, just in case you're putting it in your calendar.
Yes, May 6th.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Booton, appreciate that.
And thank you, Ms. Goslin, for reminding me.
Okay, and back to our student representative, Victoria, if you could give us a report, would love to hear it.
Thank you. Greater Lowell students have successfully collected over a thousand food items to donate to the End 68 Hours of Hunger program. Congratulations to Miss Caro's class for collecting the most food items. DECA students from Marketing and Hotel competed at the Radisson Hotel and Conference Center in Chumsford, Mass. on January 7th for their district competition. They will be sending three students to the Mass DECA State Career Development Conference on March 10th, 11th, and 12th at the Marriott Copley Hotel in Boston, Mass. Our Skills USA in-house competition award ceremony will take place on Thursday, January 28th, at 6:00 PM in the lecture hall. Students preparing to represent Greater Lowell Tech at the Skills USA district competition will be recognized. On Sunday, January 31st, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, students from Greater Lowell will be participating in the Sixth Annual Empty Bowls Event at the Living Water Center for Hope. The culinary team will be attending and serving one of their homemade soups, while other students will contribute by decorating and donating unique handmade bowls. All proceeds will benefit Living Water Center of Hope and the Lowell Transitional Living Center. The event will be held at the Living Water Center for Hope located at 10 Kirk Street in downtown Lowell. The Outing Club is in the process of planning an indoor rock climbing trip for students to learn top roping, lead climbing, bouldering, and different climbing routes, all while learning how to work as a team. Business Professionals of America anticipates taking eight students to the BPA state competition in early March. Additionally, BPA students along with Mrs. Bommel's history students collected food, clothing, toiletries, and more for Veterans Inc. BPA students will continue their work with Veterans Inc. while they participate at the state competition in March. For athletics, the wrestling team has come out strong this year, going 12-1 in dual meet competition as of January 14th. The team also finished tied for first at the Wayland Holiday Tournament in December, as well as in the top 25 out of 110 teams at the Lowell Holidays. They will look to continue their winning ways on January 16th when they compete in the always tough Woburn Invitational Tournament. Swim and Dive has seen a record number of participants this season and has seen that translate to an impressive 4-2 record as of January 14th. The Cheer Team had a large turnout this winter season and will be supporting our basketball teams while preparing for competition season in February. Boys' basketball currently sits at 7-2 as of January 14th. They will look to continue their winning ways as they prepare for big league games with Chelsea on January 19th and Greater Lawrence on January 22nd, as well as non-league matchup with perennial tourney power Arlington Catholic on January 27th. Girls' basketball sits at 7-1 as of January 6th, which includes a big non-league win over crosstown rival Lowell Catholic on January 13th. The team has received contributions from many players thus far. Additionally, senior Catherine Sweeney recently reached the career milestone of 1,000 points on January 12th, sorry, versus Notre Dame Academy. She is the first player in Lady Griffin Program history to reach this impressive scoring mark.
Thank you, Victoria, we appreciate, you know, you filling us in on everything that's going on here, and there's a lot going on, isn't there?
Thank you. Yes.
Okay, well, thanks again. Okay, now the approval of minutes from December 16, 2015. Motion by Mr. Morin, second by Mr. O'Hare. Roll call.
Mr. Tatzias, Mr. Giggie.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare.
Yes.
Mr. Espinola.
Yes.
Mr. Booton.
Yes.
Mr. Lemay.
Yes.
Mr. Morin.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes. Okay, report of the treasurer, approval of warrants, motion to approve expenditures for the sum of $9,359,993.46. By Mr. Morin, move to the way of the reading, second by Mr. Booton, roll call.
Mr. Tatzias, Mr. Giggie.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare.
Yes.
Mr. Espinola.
Yes.
Mr. Booton.
Yes.
Mr. Lemay.
Yes.
Mr. Morin.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes. Okay, if I could have a motion to approve the warrants. Motion by Mr. O'Hare, second by Mr. Morin. Roll call.
Mr. Tatzias, Mr. Giggie.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare.
Yes.
Mr. Espinola.
Yes.
Mr. Booton.
Yes.
Mr. Lemay.
Yes.
Mr. Morin.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Okay, next is the report of our general counsel, and there'll be no report tonight, our counsel has been taking care of everything we need, taken care of. And next is going to be the report of the superintendent director, Mr. Bourgeois.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first item on my report, I wanted to, we invited the DECA students that had just recently competed to come and share their competition experience with us. Unfortunately, they're all working on co-op tonight, so they were not able to get the night off, but what they said they'd like to do is to come, but come after they do the state competition so that they'll be able to share a little more information with us, so that'll be at our April meeting that they'll come. We also, as Victoria mentioned, we had something pretty special happen here within the last couple of weeks, and the first girl in school history basketball player to reach the 1,000-point milestone, which is really amazing, because if you watch her play, she's so unselfish. Generally, the people that reach 1,000 points are the ones that never pass the ball, right? This girl passes the ball more than she shoots it, and she still reached 1,000 points, so I've asked Coach Martin to be here along with Catherine. Catherine also was a student of the month last month as well, so she truly is a student athlete, and we're very proud of her, so Brian, would you like to come up and tell us a little bit more about Catherine?
Would I? Of course.
You can bring Catherine with you.
Yeah, come on up. Come on up to the. Sure she's happy that I'm the one speaking and not her, but so my name is Brian Martin, I've been the coach for girls' basketball for nine years, and Catherine is not comfortable with being the center of attention, she's a very humble young lady and a humble teammate, and I think the best way to describe her too is that a lot of the things that you see on the court are the product of hard work. She plays volleyball, she plays AAU basketball. In the fall, while she was playing volleyball, she was also coming to school at around 6:00, 6:00 in the morning, and we'd flick the lights on, and she would just work out and practice. So there's a lot of hard work that goes on behind the scenes from a lot of good players, and then when you see it on the court, you don't always see that, so she's a product of a lot of hard work and dedication, and I couldn't be prouder to coach her. So we thank you for having us, and thank you for a lot of you, school committee members, for coming to the games, it's great to see, so thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thanks for having us.
My pleasure.
She did all the work. Thanks a lot. Thank you. Thank you. Yes. Thank you. We got Greater Lawrence tomorrow. We're going, we have four road games in a row, so we're going to Greater Lawrence.
So the battle begins?
Battle begins, yeah. I hope so. Playoffs, playoffs.
Kind of good, it's not like the superintendent's not a basketball fan, too.
What team is he playing for tonight?
Tomorrow night they're playing, oh, Brian.
Thank you for coming.
Good student, too. Really. Nice.
Mr. O'Hare.
Just want to point out during Catherine's game, the big game that they had, it was probably the largest crowd that has been at a Greater Lowell game in some time. In addition, which I thought was very classy, that a lot of the students from Lowell High School, as well as some of the former athletes at, this graduating athletes from this school came to see what was taking place that night, so there's a lot of respect, and I guess if you look at it as the way the business manager looks at it, when they fill the auditorium, that's a great player. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. O'Hare, for recognizing.
You have to do it again, Mr. O'Hare.
Well, I'll start again.
Are you sure?
Well, I remember.
Basically, he was saying that you filled the house, and that there was a lot of people that came to the games just to see you be that first 1,000-point scorer here, so congratulations again, and we're all very honored to have a player like you work so hard.
And a lot of those people that came were students from Lowell High School that she played with or against, as well as former athletes at Greater Lowell. So I thought that was a real class act, real to come out, excuse me, to come out and just support one of your friends. So again, thanks for four years times four more years on the basketball court at Greater Lowell, both basketball and volleyball.
Great, thank you.
The third item on my report is the Cooperative Education Monthly Report. Every year, we see a little bit of a dip when we hit the cold weather, masonry kids are all back in, so different construction trades are all back in, so we usually, generally we see a little dip. We're still a percentage point ahead of where we were a year ago with our placements, but the report's also attached to the agenda book. Last Wednesday, this past Wednesday, we had our open house, our eighth grade annual open house. It was exceptionally well attended. The parking lot was packed, all the places were taken, the place was very vibrant, it was only open to eighth graders and their families, we want them to be able to have the run of the place and be able to get the information and answers, get questions answered. The new gymnasium was a huge improvement, we were able to put everybody except for the shops into the, not the gymnasium, the cafeteria, we were able to put everybody in the cafeteria, so when people went into the cafeteria, they could talk to all the academic tables, all the coaches, all the clubs, it was like one-stop shop, and it was great. And then they could go wander around the building and go visit all of the different shops, so the format was fantastic. Admissions was in the mall area, so anybody who wanted admissions information would go there. The gym was open to view, the pool was open to view. Jill and I did a presentation for interested parents and eighth graders in the lecture hall, we did one at 7:00. The one at 7:00 was standing room only, was full. The one at 8:00 was a half an hour before it ended, and naturally, it was just for people that might have come late, so that wasn't as full, but it was quite a, it was quite a presentation, the first one. So we're very happy with that, we're looking forward to getting our applications, they're due by February 1st, and getting our acceptance letters out hopefully in the beginning of March, so. But great, great open house, Chad did a wonderful job coordinating it as well. Last thing on my report is, when you approved my evaluation plan, there was one item that I had put in there that by February 1st, I would complete a communications plan and add it to that section, it's page five of the evaluation, so the reason that it wasn't done back then is because when we were talking about what the evaluation was going to be, that was an idea that came from the school committee to do something more meaningful around communication, so it had to be developed, I had to get a handle on just exactly what we wanted to improve and what the timeline for that was going to be. So what we're looking to do, or what I've included in here, is by June 30th, 2017, implement a communication plan that strives to enhance and facilitate access to timely information by all members of the learning community, prospective eighth grade students, families, and the general public through the development, upgrading, and/or revision of electronic, video, and print media as follows. So the electronic media, we've done some really significant upgrades to our website already, it's much different than it was at the beginning of the year. However, we're going to get it, we wanted to get it updated to a certain level, but our ultimate goal is to convert to a new web provider, so we want to get a whole new design and a whole new website. But, so by June 30th, 2016, so by the end of this school year, we're going to actually have a school app that's going to push out the current website information, so it'll be another way for people to connect to the school, and by June 30th, 2017, we'll have the whole new website all in place and up and running and going. So that's what's going on with the, on the electronic front with the evaluation. Video media, the video monitors that you see around the school are really focused on general information about the school, we want to shift those so that during non-school hours, when we have visitors and adults in, we want the information to be what it is now, it's general about the school, the clusters, the programs, but when the kids are here, they already know all that stuff, so during the day, we want it focused on things that the kids need to know about. So basketball games that are coming up, teams that won the night before, SATs, so we're going to do a shift, we've already started that, in the information and the postings on that monitor. Also going to develop a pilot informational video for at least one VTE program, I know Mr. Booton mentioned this a while back, so that is in here, so that on the website, when you go to carpentry, in addition to the pictures that are flashing in the right corner, there'll also be a link so that you can go to a three-minute video clip of kids working in that program. And eventually, we'll ramp that up to do four a year, and then we'll get on a recycle plan, so a cycle, so that we'll always be updating it, so after, you know, every six years, they go back to the, and redo them over again. Also, our major video is our eighth grade informational video, which hasn't been done over in a little while, so we're going to get that updated as well, and then every four years, we're going to get that on a cycle to update, so, and that's about 10- to 12-minute video.
Roger, is that, did June 30th, is there any chance to get it done by next year's presentation, you know, if we're doing an open house in January next year instead of waiting till June?
So I had a meeting today with Chad and with Chris Foti, specifically on the video piece.
Okay.
Right, so when I put this together and I gave it to you in the packet a week ago, so that has changed, we talked today that we want to have it done by the end of the summer so that we'll have it for next recruit season, so that's what we're working on, yeah. Chris is new, and it's just whether or not the workload that they can get it done, but they feel comfortable they can, so that is the target for that video. And actually, we're also targeting to have, rather than have the four videos done by the end of 2017, we're going to try and have four of them done by the end of this year, we're going to try and get ahead of that schedule, but it's a little bit conservative not knowing, you know, just what other things pull them away from doing that. We have two people responsible for the smart boards in the building, they're responsible for the video, they're responsible for all of this equipment you see in front of you, so it's just a matter of, it's not that we can't do it, it's just that whether or not the workload's going to allow us to, so, but I think we'll be all right. Print media, we've already upgraded a lot of the eighth grade outreach information, I think I sent you an email with some of it attached as it was being developed, we wanted to get that done for this year's open house. We still have a few more pieces we want to develop in addition to that, and we want to begin publishing a newsletter, at least twice a year, we're looking to do it three times a year, but we're going to do it at least twice a year, so it'll be about either four or six pages newsletter, basically promoting the school and the things that have happened during that last trimest in the school, so. So that's what I've added to that section that was incomplete at the time that we originally, that you originally approved the plan, so. If that's agreeable to everybody, that's what we'll do. The newsletter will be something that we would send out and get out to eighth graders and seventh graders in the district, it'd be something that we would get out to the staff and to the students that go to school here, as well as their parents, to let them know, you know, a lot of the good things that are happening and going on. Would also have a mailing list of local elected officials, state legislators, people at the Department of Education, that we would also send that out to, yeah, that'd be the target audience.
Mr. O'Hare.
I get, and have been getting, the school newspaper from Shoshine for some period of time, and I know this is, you know, is a little more modern than a printed piece of paper, but would anything like that be available for the general public in the future? Therefore, they can see more about Greater Lowell than what they would normally see, which is probably nothing, you know, if we don't send, we don't have a newspaper that would send out like that.
Yeah, so the newsletter, I think, the piece of literature that you get from that other school is, I think, called The Rampage. I actually started that when I was there. So we're going to have that here, that's exactly what we're going to develop.
Okay, but then do you have a mailing list that that is going to go to, is my point?
Yeah.
Or just general access?
No, no, the mail, nope, the mailing list will be what I just described, so it'll be, our target audience is obviously seventh and eighth graders, would like them and their families to start learning about the school, because they're going to have to make a decision whether they might want to come here, but also the community members, so you folks, the program advisors that support the school, the students, the parents, and then we're going to put together a list of local elected officials, so city managers, town managers, finance committee members, city selectmen.
Yeah.
Those type of folks, and also the state legislative delegation, as well as Commissioner of Education and all the DESC VTE staff that have to do with folk ed, that's the, yeah, that'll be the list that we put together, yeah. And Chad's already worked it into this year's budget, which we'll be deliberating on shortly, the cost of being able to do that and the cost for the postage and all of that. And it'll also be obviously available electronic, you can also send it out, there'll be an electronic version of it in PDF, it can also be blasted out emails as well.
You said you're going to send it out by mail also?
Some, yeah, yeah, a lot of it's going to go out by mail, some of it will also go out electronically, we'll post it on the website, there'll be a posting, and it'll also have all the archived issues that came out previously, so you'll be able to go back and read any ones that you might want, so that's what we're working on. And I think that's my report, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Just to add one thing, I think that's a nice report of the goal, you have to, you know, share what's happening here at Greater Lowell Tech, and it's really set up to do in a very short time, which is about 16 months, and to have it full-fledged, I think, is something that is a real need across our four communities, as well as the parents of the communities as well, so, great work, great work putting that motion forward, Mr. Booton, and let's just keep this whole ball moving forward, so, great work, thank you for your report, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you.
Okay, now a report of our business manager.
Hello, thanks for coming.
Business office updates this month include an update on the budget, as reflected in the update in front of you, we finalized the budget timeline, all the subcommittee meetings have been planned, and the town meetings have been scheduled. In-house, we've been working with all the directors and cluster chairs to review their current budgets and remove anything that is discretionary and can be, you know, spent on in future years, we're prioritizing. We're also waiting for the governor's budget to be released, and then we'll update accordingly and present to the finance subcommittee meeting on February 22nd, or to the finance subcommittee. Any questions on the budget?
Nope, seems like everything's moving forward.
Okay, and one other thing, we did the school transportation procurement process, we advertised in the local paper and with the Central Register, we obtained a list of transportation providers from Masbo, which is the Mass Association of School Business Officials, we got their survey of all transportation providers that other schools have been using recently. I also reached out to other, you know, schools and, you know, asked who they reached out to for bids, so we reached out to about 10 different schools, we did a pre-bid conference to allow for questions. On January 11th, we actually opened the bids, and we received one, and I put the, you know, the summary and the comparisons in there. There is an increase of nearly 20% or 20% when you total it, but we do feel as though that is fair. First of all, we had a three-year contract and then two years of, you know, optional years, and they didn't get to do an increase on those two last years except for a CPI index. Now with the new sick leave, and the sick leave act, they have to offer five days of sick time to their employees, and then there's the Obamacare, the Affordable Care Act, so cost have increased for them. The percent increase will stay stable for three years, so it's not as though we'll see an increase for the next three years. I think you have a spreadsheet in front of you that will show the comparison of the current year with the suggested bid.
Mr. Espinola has a question to you, Ms.?
To you, Chairman, we're sure that everybody got the bid package, right?
Yes, what I did this time, instead of doing it like the old-fashioned way of mailing it, I did it electronically with the read receipt so that, you know, someone at that email address got it.
Now, we had spoke at some time previously that there was possibly a rebate coming due to the price of gas going down, did we realize any savings?
We did, we, I believe, I don't know the exact amount, about a $20,000 fuel adjustment check this time.
Okay, and I see this, one that sticks out really to me is the increase in the late runs, it's like double.
I agree.
So what is the cause for that?
I agree with that, I actually called, we have the owner of the transportation company here too, in case you had more specific questions, but I asked that question too. There are two reasons, one, it was underestimated when they did the contract five years ago. Secondly, when we do a late run, our contract states that the latest late run is at 6:30, it's now at 7:30, because a lot of our buses are not getting back until seven, you know, what, 7:30, so by them offering a 7:30 bus run, they now have to have staff in their dispatch office even later, so that's part of why that's increased. So a combination of it wasn't funded correctly the first time, and secondly, for that, you know, staying that late at night.
Mr. Booton? Thank you.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes, I am, thanks.
So with the last two years that we haven't had an increase, and the next three years we don't, over five years, if you divide that by the 21%, we're really looking like a little over 4% per year.
If you look at it like that.
Of an increase, if you break it down over five years, it's 20%, 21% now, but again, the two years, the past two years, I know I've been here, we voted, there's been no increase, other than the consumer price increase. Gas two, last year and two and three years ago was really, really tough, which I know there's some fuel charges, but I'm sure that doesn't make up for all of it, and again, so the next three years, we wouldn't have any increase.
Right, and just so you know, I actually, the third page of that packet that you received, Masbo, the Mass Association of School Business Officials, they did a survey of all the Massachusetts school systems and what they're going to pay for their new transportation contracts, and despite the increase that we're seeing, and it might be sticker shock to us, we're actually lower than the state averages, so that third page shows all of those people that participated in the survey, and as you can see, it's $291 per run, and we're paying $267 per run, I mean, each of the different areas to compare, we were saving more, I mean, we were less than the state average.
Thank you. Mr. O'Hare.
Can you just elaborate a little bit on the late runs?
So the late runs, I believe, and this, I believe, we have a 3:00, so they, the children go home on the regular runs.
Yeah.
But after sports or after school activities, we have buses that will take kids home, I believe there's a 3:00, a 3:00, no, I'm sorry, is there a 3:00, a 4:00? Then there was a 6:30, and now they've changed one of them to a 7:30, and that's part of the, what I was discussing about.
Not to interrupt you, but John McCarthy was good enough to come tonight just in case there were questions. case there were questions, that he might be able to shed a little more information. Do you wanna come up, John?
I mean, actually, Betty's the expert, because Betty's been actually doing her contract about 50 years.
We should have the boss come up then, Betty. Go on up.
Hiya.
Good evening, I'm John McCarthy.
Give him a microphone, so he can hear you.
Have a seat, we'd love to ask you a few questions.
No, I'm good, thank you.
If I could though, quickly, just give you a summary of the bid process and what just happened. And I said this to Billy Joe. I said, when I walked through the door, I said, even though that I seem to be the only bidder, I said, you're gonna be pleasantly surprised at what your bid's gonna be. If you look over the last ten years that you guys have paid for busing, you've literally not had an increase over ten years. What happened was, in the course of the time that we've done your contract, we've bought you brand-new buses. So, with the new buses, even though fuel has gone down substantially, there have been other factors that have got into it, which is the absenteeism, which is mandated by the state now. If you work, for every thirty hours you work, you equal one hour of sick time, and that's accumulated up to forty hours, which you can carry over to the next year. And drivers are using that. So we're not figuring labor anymore at 180 days, we're now figuring it at 190, because we have to have a replacement driver to do that. Your late runs, Betty can actually tell you what happened in the transformation of your late runs. Your late runs originally were, you guys were paying more money for late runs five years ago, before we had the contract. We did miscalculate the bid. We sat down, I actually met your superintendent a year ago, and we, and I discussed it a little bit, and he's a, he's true, he's true to the contract, but I let him know that the late runs we were losing money on, they actually take about an hour and a half. We figured they were less than an hour. And Betty can tell you a little bit more about that, if you'd like to know. And that was the reason for the increase on the late runs. And the time that we're out there, not only do we have a dispatcher on, we also have a mechanic on. These buses aren't rolling back home till almost nine o'clock at night. So, and that's really different, you know, I don't have any other school district, I transport 90,000 students in the state of Massachusetts. I don't have another school district that does that, so.
Yeah, they're out, they're out pretty late, so.
But I, but I still think we, if you look at it across the state, you guys did very well. I mean, there are techs right now that are paying. See, your school doesn't really match up with any other, with any other runs, like we do Lowell Tech, Lowell Tech, not Lowell Tech, I'm sorry, Lawrence, Andover Tech. Half those buses will match up with some Andover runs, so, you know, they may come in around 252, you know, 256, you may see that. Your runs don't match up with anything, so all your buses are running directly for your school and not doing anything else. And schools across the state that have those one-tier runs are coming in around 310, 315. The reason why we were able to do what we did is because we combined your contract through another office where we used the City of Lowell, Chelmsford, and Drake it all in that area. So we utilized two garages, one dispatch office, so.
And you have a, you have a three o'clock and a five o'clock, and then you have the 7:30. So there's three sets of runs.
What criteria do you use for a run? Is it just mileage, or how is it broken down?
It's mileage and hours, and hours.
And hours, combination.
Yeah, and I don't know if you've seen the, what's going on in the transportation, and you probably don't, because it's, the only time you guys look at is now. There is a driver shortage across the country. Truck drivers, you, everybody's looking for drivers right now. And the only thing that's driver retention, which you guys are lucky, the majority of your drivers are still here. They've been here, I would say seventeen out of all your, seventeen drivers have been here for ten years or longer. But money talks. These drivers aren't making, you know, $15 anymore. We're gonna bring them up to, the new contract rate is $20, so we're bringing them up to $20 an hour. You know, and you know what? Rightfully so. I mean, they don't have, they don't have an easy job, so, you know.
And you offer benefits and all of that?
Well, now we offer, if they're, if they're a. Yeah, we, don't forget, they're still, if they're working under 30 hours, they're still a part-time employee. But a lot of these tech drivers now do the charters, they push them over. So they're entitled to a single policy of insurance, on top of, you know, even though they're considered, you know, a seasonal employee, but based on the way that the new, Obamacare is laid out, they're entitled to that compensation. They'll often take it, but we still have to think that everybody's gonna take it, if it does take it. It comes out to roughly $6 a bus a day, so.
Any other questions?
So that's a soft number, not a hard number.
That's a soft number.
Yeah. So, do you ever divide it, and, you know, which is, wouldn't that be a reduction if we didn't have to pay that additional expense for the extra insurance?
Would you, would you, excuse me?
Right now, right now, everybody isn't, you mentioned the insurance.
Yeah.
But everybody isn't accepting insurance, because they may be insured from someplace else, or for some other reason. But still, you're charging back, charging back the district that possible.
I'm charging back the district what Obamacare is costing my company, and I'm using that factor, not just your district, across the 1,500 buses that I use. So, so when I use that number, I come up with that number. So, and also with a factor of maybe some, some people aren't gonna use it. So we took, we took about a million dollars, we divided it by, you know, the days of school, divided by the number, we came up with a figure to use for our bid. So it doesn't apply just to your contract, it applies to any of the contracts that we bid on. So, we wouldn't be able to say, hey, you know what, so-and-so didn't get to use that particular insurance, so we're gonna take that off that bus. We wouldn't be able to do that.
So, the question here is, you've submitted a bid of $2,523,700. What are we looking at costs the following two years?
The same price.
Same price.
Same price, same price over three years, and it goes up CPI.
Yeah, so it'd just be adjusted for fuel, right?
It would be adjusted for fuel.
If we see any increase or decrease, it'll be a fuel adjustment.
It would be a fuel adjustment.
For the first three years.
And, and I'm also in the fuel business, it was one of the, it's one of the reasons why I'm able to keep my prices down. Again, I am substantially lower than most of my contractors in the state. We own our own fueling company, we do our own fueling, we buy bulk fuel from Boston. Right now, we don't see fuel going up, you know, I mean, projected out nine months, you know, unless there's a war or something, but nine months, we don't see fuel going up. It's looking, it's looking really well.
Okay. I think the one thing that I've noticed, since you guys have had our contract, is how you updated all the buses. You did, you gave us all new buses, and as a matter of fact, I would see how many students you would have on your buses being picked up in the morning, and I could tell that there weren't many seats that were open. So I can, I personally have noticed that you guys are very efficient at what you do. I know that it's not easy to go ahead and maintain employees and such like that, especially considering the new sick policy, as well as Obamacare. And I think that this is a pretty fair offer. So, you know, I think at the end of the day, we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna take a roll call vote, and we'll see how this board feels about it. Mr. Booton?
I did have a question, if I could ask.
Sure.
Have we looked into using shorter buses for end-of-days? Do you have any times specifically that there's less than the, you know, full 66 on a bus?
So here's the scoop. You guys are pretty packed.
Okay, I mean, you know, Mr. Bahu brought that up, that.
You guys are pretty packed, and your student body doesn't fluctuate much. Matter of fact, when we get our student body list, you guys give us every student that you have, and then we just kinda weed out to see who's not gonna go. And the first couple of weeks, we actually run extra buses to pick up the stragglers. You know, if anything that I would suggest next time around, that you go with a bigger bus. It would give you a little bit more flexibility with students. You'll probably be paying a couple more, we haven't added buses on in a long time, but you, your population is growing, it just seems to be growing. You know, you haven't ran into a, an overload. By law, on a 77 passenger, right, so that's a 13-inch butt, 13-inch butt is a elementary school, school child. So, by law, on a 77 passenger, there's supposed to be 52 students. Some of your buses have more than 52 on them. So, registry has, you know, brought it to the attention, and we gotta, and we gotta keep that in mind for safety. You know, we gotta make sure that every student is sitting forward and their seats are not in the aisles, and it's not creating a problem, and that's why you haven't really had it. But you're, you're, you're at capacity. They're doing a good job here of keeping your transportation budget down, based on adding, adding, adding buses, adding vehicles.
Mr. O'Hair, I'm sorry.
Just one more item. I have a lot of families that I know, and they're very complimentary of your drivers, the long-term drivers, have been doing a good job. I hear it from the parents, because I ask them, you know, how do you could say, talk about the busing, because we've had other neighboring towns that haven't had as good of experiences. So, I will compliment you, I've heard very good things about your drivers, and the kids get picked up on time, especially those cold mornings. If they get picked up late, we'll be getting phone calls, and we haven't been, so keep up the good work, and please pass that along to your drivers, that it's recognized.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I just don't, I also want you to know, we also have a new GPS system that we just turned over to Annie, so the school system can see your buses now. And we did that at our cost. So it's called Senovia, you know, so Annie now, rather than taking our word for it, we had a meeting, and we've, we've had some challenges, you know, coming into this year with driver shortages, and we're trying to meet the, you know, voice of the customer. We also noticed that there might be a small time difference between school and our clock, so we've adjusted our clock to your clock. But, so what we've done is, Senovia is a GPS system that you actually, it's, you know, instead of a delayed time, it's, it's, I'm trying to think of the word.
Real time?
Real time, sorry. It's real time. So if there is a problem, she can see it right at that moment. So, and if there's a bus running late, so rather than having to call Betty and saying, hey geez, where is the bus, she can see where the bus is. This afternoon, for example.
So that's Annie Emerson in our business office, who monitors how the buses are doing, and.
Right, and now she can, now she can see it.
She keeps track of any issues, and now she can log on to her computer, and if there's a bus that's late, she can see exactly where it is on the computer.
She's the transportation coordinator?
Well, she, she works in the business office for Billy Joe, but part of her responsibility is the bus contract.
She does a great job.
Yep, and, and just so you know, I oversee emails, so, you know, yes, no, yes, everything's good, thumbs up, you know, if there's a problem, you know, I'll, I'll get involved in it. And again, I thought the fact that they would be able to see their own buses and be able to answer their own questions. Like I said, bus 19 today, they couldn't find it, and actually, you know, she pulled it up, and it was behind the building pulling in. So, you know, she answered her own question, it was good, and, you know, and we got the kids, we got the kids on.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Excuse me, some of our drivers here, that you've had for a long time, are former students of this school.
Yeah, yeah.
Mostly females, actually.
A lot of my mechanics, a lot of my mechanics are former students of this, of this particular school, so.
I know you've participated in our call-out program a little bit, too.
Yes, yes, we do, yes, we do. We have, we have kids that are working for them. You know, and we do that with all the techs, but, yeah.
Where are buses housed? Do they take their buses normally?
They're all over the place. We have some up in Tingsboro, we have some down in, we have some in Drake it, we have some in Lowell, we have, they're actually, because you're such a big contract, your, our buses are placed where the majority of the population is to pick them up, shut us run, cut, keep fuel down.
Strategically placed.
Strategically placed. Yeah, they're not, they're not all on one line, yeah, so.
Okay, Mr. O'Hair.
Do we set the routes up on the buses?
We work with the bus company, once we get the addresses of the kids, to determine the routes, to be able to get, you know, fifty, pick up 52 kids and.
Just a quick question, you mentioned, you mentioned, what's the next size, is it a 77 bus?
77, then 83.
All right. And we are running some with 50.
You're running 77s.
With 52 students on.
Uh-huh.
But is that a, is there any liability, if anything, is that an overloaded bus?
At 52? At 57? Again, so the registry, you know, I've had the registry come up and say, you know, hey, there's 62 kids on that bus, and we turn around and say, you know, and then we've asked them to get on the bus, and if everybody's seated correctly. Again, we're not taking out measuring sticks and measuring behinds, you know, we are making sure that the students are safely positioned in the seat, so if there was an impact at one point, we've had calls to say, hey, we might have a bus that might be overloaded, and we make an adjustment. That's why in the beginning of the school year, we run the extra buses, until, you know, the students that end up driving their, driving themselves to school, or, you know, it just seems like, the first couple of days, everybody's taking the bus, and then it starts to, actually, she can answer most of these.
We just move, we'll move them around, like, I've been doing this for a long time, and the buses fall behind them. If there's an overload, we grab those kids. Once they reach capacity, they'll go on the bus behind them. We have the heavy areas that we're used to be shadowed. Then once we sit down and talk with Annie, we'll go back and forth and see where we can place those students to kinda equal out those busloads and.
So to shot into that, you do your best to get a seat for each kid.
Listen, and if I thought my, and I'm gonna use the example, if I thought my ass was in the wind, I'd be calling you saying, hey, you guys could add a bus on.
Because the penalty is on you, right?
Huh? The liability's on me? It's my job to make sure that we place these students in vehicles safely, that's what you asked me to do. It's on me.
Oh, you have insurance repercussions if there's a problem.
Right, that's right. And you guys are identified from that, so.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, let's have a roll call.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
A motion to approve the contract.
Motion to approve by Mr. Espinola?
I wanna speak.
Oh, you asked a question? Okay, Mr. Espinola, go ahead.
This, from what I can understand, this isn't a drop-dead number, this isn't a contract, is, we're voting on this, and I don't know if this, these are the numbers that we're gonna have on the physical paper that we sign. I'm under the impression that, that they, these are fluctuating numbers.
No, they're not, that's the number.
I have the actual bid, if you wanna see that.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that when I sign, I, I thought I heard somebody say there was numbers that are gonna be fluctuating.
You can't, we did the contract until you guys voted on it.
This was a bid, it was based on 30B. I was the only bidder, but I was the lowest, lowest and only bidder, and if you choose to accept it, those are the numbers.
Okay.
Yeah, and Joe, the only fluctuation to that would be.
The CPI.
Fuel, in any year, right? If the fuel goes up or down, this goes up, up or down.
I understand all that.
And then, on the, on the two years of the option, of our option to renew, it would be subject to a CPI adjustment. That's what it says right here, right?
Okay, just one more thing, before you go on further, Mr. Espinola. We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Booton, if we could just go ahead and have a second audit, so we can resume this discussion. Second by Mr. O'Hair. Okay, thank you, go ahead. Mr. Espinola, go ahead.
I can talk again?
Okay.
All right.
That's enough.
Only for 20 minutes.
What is hotel nursing and medical runs?
Hotel nursing and medical runs, so we have students in hotel management, students in health assisting and medical assisting, who come to school, they take attendance, the buses drop the kids off, and then there's, there's a bus or two that wait. And once the kids take their homeroom attendance, they go back and get on the bus, and they bring them to, to a hotel, and drop the hotel kids off there with their teacher. They bring the teacher and the medical assisting students to Lowell General Hospital, and they bring the health assisting kids someplace else. So, so what we're doing is, we're paying for the runs to bring them to their, for the, for the health and medical kids, it's their clinical placement.
So we're bringing these kids from their house to the school.
Yep.
To take attendance, so that we can bring them to another place.
And then after they, then, before they come back, they also pick them up and bring them back here.
And then they take them back home?
Yeah. From there?
Well, some kids are going to.
It seems to be counterproductive.
No, some kids are going to play sports, some kids are going to, you know, eventually they might be on a late bus rather than a bus right away to go home. But that's the way it's set up. I don't know how we'd set it up for them to pick them.
All right, that's nothing to do with your contract. I'm trying to figure out why we're doing that, that doesn't make any sense to me.
I'll explain it to you later, Joe.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Sounds like it's the hop.
I know there's an explanation, believe me, I know there is, so.
Is there any more discussion or should we just go to roll call?
Can I just ask for the motion? The contract would start for the FY 17.
July 1st. Yes, July 1st.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the job you're doing.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work because we'll be getting those calls.
Did anybody?
Lot of questions.
Actually, a couple of people showed up for the, yeah.
Didn't submit?
Yeah, they didn't.
Yeah, all my questions.
Right. Good luck.
What is a good company, is a good?
It's a tough business. We're lucky to have them.
Okay, is there any more from the business manager, without your complete report?
Yes, that's all.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Turner. Thank you.
That was easy. We appreciate it, a lot easier than we thought it would be.
$2 million.
Uh, maybe. Sign that one.
I just have a question. If your name shows up in there, you can have this on the line.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
But I will, there's a qualifying.
He does.
Under old business, we have any, we have outstanding items from previous meetings? Everybody okay with our three outstanding items? Okay, we'll just.
Something for new business, I don't know if it's appropriate, but.
We'll just keep them right as they are.
If I could say something on new business?
New business, yeah, new business is the next item on the agenda.
Just like it noted that Mr. Espinola's birthday is today. Happy birthday to my colleague. And I'm sure he's happy to be here at a meeting. If you'd like us to sing, we could.
Happy birthday, Joe. Let's move it on.
Okay, well, kids are waiting. You're very welcome, Mr. Booton. Thank you for honoring Mr. Espinola on this very special day of his and we appreciate you coming to the meeting. Mr. Espinola, I'm sure it's not easy for your family, but I'm sure they'll be ready to celebrate the moment you get home.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other, right now, school committee person motions, there are none. So we'll just move on to the approval of subcommittee report for the Greater Lowell Tech High School Building Committee Report. Motion to approve by Mr. Morin, seconded by Mr. Tatsias. Roll call.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?